Native American Heritage Month is observed by acknowledging the contributions of Native Americans long before the formation of the United States, which we recognize is inextricably woven into the history of this country. And whereas Native American Awareness Week began in 1976 and recognition was expanded by President George H.W. Bush in August 1990, designating the month of November as National American Indian Heritage Month. And whereas in celebrating the traditions, cultures, and accomplishments of Native Americans, we also acknowledge our nation's history of colonialism that has inflicted discrimination, deprivation, and genocide upon Indigenous people. And whereas we are aware of the historic historical importance of local and national tribes and the way Native Americans continue to enrich our heritage and add to all aspects of our society by sharing their customs and traditions, and whereas we honor our Native people, their ancestral homes, their religion, and recognize their contributions historically today and in the future of our community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Patent Township Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim the month of November as Native American Heritage Month, a time to celebrate the rich cultures of Indigenous people, honor their sacrifices, acknowledge the unique challenges Native Americans face historically and present, and recognize their continued significance in our community. Signed this 12th day of November, 2025.
Thank you very much. At this point, do we need a motion and a vote? Okay. May I have a motion to accept this as a proclamation? And all those, oh, and a second? Sorry. Do you have a second for this?
Yeah, we have a second from.
Okay, sorry. And all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Thank you. We are, then, the Patent Township is officially proclaiming November as National Native American History Month. Thank you. Moving on to the signature item for tonight's meeting, the proposed 2026 Township Budget. And I'm supposing either Amy or Larry will be taking that?
Yeah, Larry's gonna do a presentation on the budget and then we want to have a conversation with you after that briefly.
Sounds great.
Okay, so, um, tonight is, uh...
One second.
One second.
There we go.
Okay, that's, alright. So, last Wednesday on November 5th, I did a presentation and we had a work session for the budget. This week, we're going to do a tentative adoption. And then on December 10th, in our meeting on December 10th, we'll have a public hearing and a final adoption for the budget and the CIP. So this budget that I'm proposing has a 1.2 mil increase for real estate taxes. That means that we have 11 and a half mils for real estate and six tenths of a mil for open space preservation. That came from our referendum in 2013, I believe it was. Earned income taxes, a half a percent. Local services taxes, $52. Real estate transfer taxes, a half a percent. The earned income tax, the LST, and the transfer tax are all at maximum rates permitted by law. The breakdown of our millage allocation is 8.8 mils for general, 1.2 mils for other debt, six tenths of a mil for open space preservation, four tenths of a mil for the library, seven tenths of a mil for parks capital improvements, and four tenths of a mil for fire, for a total of 12.1 mils. The budgeted revenues are $14.755 million. That break started at 6.372 for real estate, $351,000 for tax on open space, earned income tax of just under $3 million, other taxes of $984,000, intergovernmental payments of $3.286 million, and non-tax sources of $814,000. There we go. Expenditures. Our expenditures are budgeted for $15,556,000. General government is $2.078 million. Police is $4.577 million. Public works, $4.376 million. Community services, planting and zoning in parks and rec, $1.917 million. Other community services, $1.574 million. Debt service, other debt service of $787,000, and open space debt service of $245,000. That means revenue of $14,755,337. Expenditures of $15,556,173 for a decrease in the fund balance of $800,836, and a year-end cash balance of $736,724, which is 4.74 of operating expenditures. The budget includes these assumptions and estimates, 3.1% for COLA for non-uniform employees, 1.25% merit increase for non-uniform employees on their anniversary date. The contract has a 4% increase for the uniformed employees. Our health insurance costs are going up by 6%. And non-uniform employees contribute 12% of the total cost of health insurance, and the uniformed employees contribute 9%. And just to reiterate, tonight is tentative adoption. The December 10th meeting will be the public hearing and the final adoption. So I will take any questions, and if there aren't any questions, if the board so chooses, they could make a motion to adopt the tentative budget.
And before we get into that, there's...
Oh, before we get into that, we do have something that we want to discuss.
Yes, there's one thing we wanted to discuss with you. Maybe if you can pull up Suton and Betsy can see this.
Okay.
Okay. So after our meeting last week, Larry and I did a deeper dive into our dedicated real estate millages to see if they were keeping pace with the expenditures that they're allocated for. So we focused on the library millage, which is .4 mils, and the fire company, which is .4 mils. And as you remember through our discussions at the COG, the fire company's actually moving into a paid hybrid situation, and they've been hiring some paid firefighters, so their costs have gone up. So what we found is that these millages are not collecting enough money to cover these costs, meaning the general fund has been used to meet these expenses. So we were talking, and we thought that it might be a good idea to actually raise these dedicated mills and lower the general millage, because that, while it's still the same overall tax increase at 1.2 mils, that better actually reflects where our money is being spent. And so if our residents ask, they would know that we're spending 1 mil of their tax dollars on the fire company, and we're spending its .8 mils now on the library in addition to the other. And also, I think it's just kind of a better look, because it shows that we're judiciously spending their money. We're not trying to just take in general millage and spend money on, you know, extravagant things. That's not what we do. So we wanted to ask if you would be amenable to changing the proposed 2026 millages. So our general millage would be 7.8 mils. The debt would stay at 1.2. Open space stays at .6. The library would go from .4 to .8 mils. The parks capital improvement stays at .7 mils. The fire company goes from .4 to 1.0 mils, and that's still a total of 12.1 mils. If you're amenable to that, we just want you to make a motion, and then we'll make that correction before we advertise the budget. Elliot?
I make a motion that we change the budget as just stated, so that it reflects what we're actually spending the money on, and that we adopt it tentatively, tentatively.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, great. So it's been moved and seconded. We make changes in the millage allotted respectively to the library firefighters and the general overall millage to more accurately reflect the specific use of income.
And... That's a question, Betsy.
Yes.
I need Amy to repeat the fire. What's the fire?
Fire goes from .4 mils to 1.0 mils.
Okay, that's what I...
Thank you.
Uh-huh.
Great. Any questions, any discussion at this point? Okay, seeing none, we've had a motion, we've had a second. Call for the vote on this. All those in favor of the motion to change the millage to reflect the actual spending that's going on next year, signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Then the ayes have it.
And then you'd need a motion to tentatively adopt the budget.
Okay, we're looking at then the overall motion to adopt the budget, as Amy said. So I'll need a motion and then a second.
Elliot moved.
And we got a motion second. Any more discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Nay? The ayes have it, so we have our budget adopted for 2026.
Tentatively adopted.
Tentatively adopted, and the final adoption will be on December 10th. And again, many thanks to our finance director, Larry Pager, and his trusty assistant, our manager. Thank you so much. Oh, sorry. And gotta get back on my...
My trusty assistant, junior.
I'm so glad you...
I'm the junior finance director.
Junior finance director. And for some reason, my trusty screen, oh, here we go. So we, I guess we are now on to the capital improvement plan. Sorry about that, I'm going between proposed budget and then I'm see, the capital improvement plan, and that's again for, well, for the year 2026 to 2030. I'm assuming that our manager will handle this item.
Actually take that.
Well, then our finance director.
With the, the capital improvement plan coming up before the budget, what we have done in the past is after we complete the budget, we make changes to the capital improvement plan estimates to reflect what's in the budget. So that's all that's really happened here, is I have taken, taken amounts from the tentative budget that we just adopted and placed them in the capital improvement plans. Plans of the projects, we didn't do anything with the projects. These projects are still the ones that I addressed in the, in the original presentation of the capital improvement plan. So we're still planning on doing the public works facility design, the nonprofit grants, the forest management at the Seward property, Phase 3 of Burnell Road Park, the pump track, paving the pump track at Burnell Road Park, replacing the safety surface at the Burnell Road Park, the widening of the walking path at Circleville Park, the purchase of software for, the purchase of software for public works. The only difference in that is that we increased the cost in 2026 by $17,000, because there's an upfront cost to install it, the radio replacement for public works, and those are the projects that we're gonna do. So this projected real estate tax rates now reflects in 2026, in 2027, the 12.1 mils that we just talked about, going back on to 10.9 in 2028, 9.9 in 2029, and 9.5 in 2030, which is where we started at in 2025.
Sounds like a deal to me. It sounds like a...
One more, I think one more slide, and that's the, the end of cash balance projections.
Right.
It shows the 4.7 that we just did on the budget, and it going up every year from there, as we're building our fund balance back up. And with that, then, if you have any comments or questions, I'll be more than happy. There's no action that the board has to take on.
Such a deal. Thank you. Yes, comments, Pam?
Larry, you said radio for public works, isn't it for police?
We're doing both.
We're doing both.
Okay, got you. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Again, many thanks to our director of finance, Larry Pager, for that. I know we've all been through the CIP, and, and really, I think it is a big bang for our buck. We're doing a lot of things next year, as we have in the past. Next on our agenda, looks like we'll be hearing from Chief Jolly, it's our Public Safety Monthly Report.
All right, thank you, and good evening to everyone. While Larry pulls it up here, I'll kind of get started on my October 2025 report. Our officers conducted 171 traffic stops, wrote 34 citations, 23 parking tickets, handled 23 criminal arrests. Bike patrol was still able to be out there with the nice weather we had in October, rode 63 miles, did 74 business checks, handled eight incidents, and two vacation home checks. Under department notes, a 28-year-old male was cited for harassment. Our officers were dispatched to a domestic dispute. When we got there, the male admitted that he had pushed his girlfriend as part of that dispute. 57-year-old male was arrested as a person not possessed a firearm. The male had left the firearm behind after selling his home. As officers were investigating to possibly turn it back over to that person, they found that his criminal history prohibited him from having a firearm. 38-year-old male was arrested for violating a protection from abuse order. He was sending the protected party, you know, their text messages, which were in violation of the law. 12 arrests were made for retail theft, one for DUI. We served 18 of the 22 warrants that we attempted and conducted for vacation home checks. Our officers did not have to use force during any incidents in the month of October. Under community relations, Officer Tuskovich assisted with the IU-10 in the lockdown drill. Sergeant Schaefer did a presentation to the Citizens Police Academy about the tactical response team. Officer Tuskovich did a presentation to the 7th grade Park Forest Middle School Health class about social media usage and how to safely use it. Officer Hardsell and Officer Friend did ride-alongs for individuals who are interested in law enforcement careers. Officer Sunderland participated in a license plate replacement event that we hosted right here about three weeks ago. We talked about it actually the evening that it was occurring. We partnered with senior manual folks, staff, and I believe we had 25 community members come through that we helped replace. A lot of times you'll see the license plates are peeling now. So replacing those was a very successful event, and we look forward to partnering with them again here in the near future to have them replace those. Officer Tuskovich presented Run High Fight to the administrative staff at Amaran Millage for State College School District. Officer Snyder and Graff attended a Halloween event at Amazight Park, and he also did an article search demonstration for all participants at that. And Officer Tuskovich attended a Trump recruit event at Park Forest Middle District. Under training and department activities, our officers attended the tactical response team training. Our department welcomed a new officer, Officer Zachary Kreis, who was sworn in by M.D.J. McLean, is currently completing his field training. We will try to get him here some night when he's not on midnights, sleeping at this time to meet your board. Officer Kaufman attended training to become a field training officer. Some of a lot of our younger officers, Officer Brooks, Officer Friend, Officer Pinocchio, and Officer Awini attended Mobile Field Force and active shooter training. Officer Tuskovich and Officer Kaufman served as instructors at that training. Officer Snyder and Graff completed their required two days of training, and they also have to report for recertified as a K-19 by the Northern American Police Working Dog Association. Graff has also deployed two separate incidents to sniff vehicles. He did hit on one of the vehicles in subsequent search of that vehicle, a gram of methamphetamine was located inside the vehicle, so he did a nice job on that. I attended the Citizens Police Academy graduation, emergency services meeting, radio advisory committee meeting, the Center County Chiefs meeting, CCU meeting, and I also served on selection committees for Ferguson and State College Police Department Chief of Police Services. A few of the, some of the notes that we received, first one, recognizing Officer Sunderland, helped a community member who called, they found a lost dog that was in the park forest area. Just a couple of the comments that they made about Officer Sunderland that really stood out to me, number one being, you couldn't have been nicer or helpful. And just saying, you went above and beyond to exemplify community service, who's an awesome police officer, and reflects the quality of the Township Police Department, the Tennessee, and all those things. Turned out the dog was a 20-year-old dog from Washington State, and pets come first. To the credit, we got them involved in the area, we'll be getting him back to his owner. So, it's done really well there. We got another nice note from a family whose younger son was here at Penn State visiting his girlfriend. They're from the Long Island, New York area, and he locked his keys in his vehicle, and they had no way of helping him, but he would call the police, and Officer Mike Friend responded quickly to allow him to get back into his vehicle in Pennsylvania, so they appreciated how nice the officer was and the service they provided for that. A photograph of Officer Kreis, who I just mentioned, being sworn in by M.D.J. McLean. And lastly, we have a couple different photographs. The top one is of, as we, our star employee, Graff, off in his hand or Mitch Snyder, and that is out at the Amazight Park for an event that they had. They had a little parade, and then an event at the park for some of the kids that were in that neighborhood. And then the photo on the bottom, I mentioned the gram of methamphetamine, that was what was located after Graff hit in that vehicle that we discussed. Lastly, just a record list of service, list of calls for service. For October, we handled 529 calls, that's down slightly from the 552 we handled in September. There were 119 of them were school checks, and 53 were health and safety, the assistance. And lastly, just one last note, with that, I guess it was yesterday morning, that little bit of bad weather that we got, we were busy, so we responded to a lot of, a couple different crashes, and then a few calls from vehicles that slid off the roadways. So just as a reminder, as the bad weather is going to be coming here very shortly, just give yourself some time, leave a little bit earlier, just take your time. A lot of times roads may look wet, but it can be black ice and slippery, so just very, very careful. Take your time, so that we don't have to respond to too many crashes, this is what we appreciate that. That's all I have.
Okay. Great to hear. Thanks so much for all you do, Chief. And we're moving on next to public works, where there are no items, and next on to planning and zoning. And we'll start with a report from the Planning Commission, and I understand that Debbie City is, sit tight, did I say that right? Will be presenting.
How do I answer that?
Presenting the report.
Very short.
Okay.
November 3rd, we approved all the minutes from the 8th and the 12th. There were no public comments from residents or from the public. We did, do the Planning Commission approve the Fillmore Market Cafe land development, and will seek final approval from the board. The proposal was a Fillmore Cafe located at 2781 Buffalo Run Road, owned by JCP Group. The parcel was about 3.66 acres and is zoned R1 rural residential. The plan calls for the building of 3,330 square feet, Market Cafe, along supporting site of infrastructure. The use variance was granted by Patent Township on May 2nd, allowing existing market to use across 550 for the new location. As part of the approval condition, the applicant must demo the current building and restore the northern section across the street, the property to its national, or its natural state. We reviewed the materials provided and requested needed verification. We got input, we didn't really have any input from the public, and recommended approval from the supervisors. The Planning Commission's concerns were the traffic pattern entrance and exit. We were gracious enough to have Mr. Keller there to explain to us. The Planning Commission reviewed the proposed traffic flow pattern for site entrance and exit. It was discussed that a four-foot medium diverter is planned to manage the two-way in and out, rather than having a separate entrance and a separate exit. There will be parking of 26 spaces. The drive-in is designed for, and I wasn't sure what a 14-car stack was, but I finally realized it was 14 cars in line with a 1.67 minute per vehicle going through that drive-thru. Questions were asked about the bike access. The bike path was not asked, or the, there is no bike path, there was no additional bike paths are being implemented or required. The bike rack, there will be bike racks installed and placed in a concrete area. There will be outside seating available. Then we went on to discuss some short-term rental. Planning Commission was happy to see the agenda that we had, how many short-term rentals were added. We asked the Planning Commission if we could have a bullet point on what has been approved by the supervisors. And that was pretty much our agenda.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I must say, I'm excited to see the development of this cafe and, well, parking area, I forget what, what you're calling it, but I know that area, driven by it several times. It's always nice to see something brought back to life again. Any comments from the board? Any questions? Okay, great. Thank you so much, Debbie, for that report, and thank you for all your work. Okay, we are now on to the, are we going to the, we're making a separate item for the Fillmore Market land development. Sorry about that, yes. Which is, which Debbie sort of introduced us to. So who's taking that?
Jenna Worgo's gonna do the introduction.
Hey Jenna.
Kat is here from Keller Engineering, so Jenna will go first.
Of course. Okay, great. Thanks, Amy.
I'm happy to say, pretty much I can, I'm gonna say what Debbie said. So, we're gonna run through this real quick. The Fillmore Market Cafe land development plan, so it's tax parcel 18002021. It is approximately 3.66 acres in the rural residence zoning district. So the plan, it's proposing a construction of a 3,300-square-foot marking cafe with associated infrastructure. This is the original building as it stands today. On May 2nd, 2024, a use variance was granted by your zoning hearing board to permit this pre-existing non-conforming use to continue on this parcel at the new location across the street. And part of that variance that was granted, the applicant is required to demo this existing structure and restore that northern portion of the parcel back to its natural state. There are a lot of wetland areas on that northern portion, so I think that's a really big win for the township, getting this side of the roadway back to that intended state. So this is the layout of the proposed land development plan. You can see here, within the middle at the entrance to the structure, that barrier that will prevent, you know, the confusion on accessing this property. Again, this will include a drive-through, and as Debbie pointed out, 14-car stacking lane, and then there will be 26 parking spaces, bike parking is provided as well. Debbie did a great job describing the discussions that were had at the November 3rd Planning Commission meeting. The only one I can think of is the right-of-way along 550. It was asked about potentially making this larger for, making... It was asked about potentially making this larger for, make it safer for bicyclists, and I believe that our MPO representative will be taking that back for their consideration for another project. So, pretty quick, and I am happy to answer any questions the board may have on this proposal. Michael Pratt is also in person as well, so I'm sure between both of us, we can get you an answer.
Thank you, Jenna. Any questions from the board, questions or comments? I'm excited, I'm hopeful, it's kind of isolated, but I think that route gets a lot of traffic, so maybe it'll turn into another naked egg of sorts, with a lot of groupies that like to go there for their males. Okay. Uh, thank you so much again, Jenna, and I'm gonna switch back to my, so Fillmore Market. We're now on to, oh, oh, got that, thank you so much. Okay, so seeing that there are no more comments or questions, I'd like a motion to approve the development plans for the Fillmore Marketing Cafe. Okay, and a second?
I'll second.
Okay, great, thanks. All those in favor of this proposal signify by saying aye. Aye? And any opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. I look forward to the development of this project.
Thank you.
Thank, yeah, thank you. Let's see, we're now going on to the Act 537 Plan, special study for the Meeks Lane Pumping Station, and, perfect, thanks, Amy.
So, CRPA received a revised special study for the Meeks Lane Pump Station project from UAJ and their consultant. The study identifies six alternatives for the project. You may remember that you have seen this in the past, it was brought up in 2019. Their task activity report for the pump station was authorized by the COG, Public Services and Environmental Committee, in September of 2019, and approved by DEP in October of 2019. They've been through several iterations of the plan between 2020 and 2022 to evaluate different sewer flow scenarios, but a potential pump station in Forest Main locations. Plan was never formally adopted by the COG or its municipalities. It was revised and resubmitted back for review on October 17th. So, in the interim, we received plans, land development plans, for the Reserve and the Reserve East, which both need the pump station to proceed. So we're being asked, because we've been identified as a stakeholder, to review this special study and provide comment on it. Comments are due back by December 23rd. Our recommendation is that you refer this item to the Planning Commission first, and let them provide comment at their meeting on December 1st, and then you'll get their comments back and can provide the rest of your comments on December 10th. So if you're okay with that, we just need a motion to refer it back to the Planning Commission.
Great, and a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any more discussion? If not, we'll take a vote, though, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, the ayes have it, so we're sending this package down to the Planning Commission. Sounds great. And we will next move to the administration, request for input in the development of regional impact process, the public park amendment process. I take it this is, yeah, go ahead, Amy.
So, CRPA is requesting feedback from the COG municipalities on policy questions related to public sewer extensions to public parkland. So you may remember, we have the developed regional impact process, which was developed by the COG in 2013, and that process deals with private development. So if a developer wants to come in, there's a process they have to follow. So you may also remember that in 2011, the COG, 2011, 2012, the COG decided to purchase Hess Field, and has been trying to decide what to do with the restrooms pretty much every year since then. So in July of this year, Harris Township submitted a letter to the COG Executive Director requesting that the COG begin preparing for extension of the public sewer to the Hess Field softball complex. So, what we're being asked to do tonight, and this went through Lucy at the COG level and also COPC, to discuss whether public parkland should have different consideration through the DRI process. You may or may not be familiar with the DRI process, we don't see a ton of them, but when you go through that process, it's to extend public sewer to a property that's being privately developed. You have to put together a report, typically takes a couple of months to put together, that looks at the impacts from the police department, the school district, any other impacts that would happen if sewer came and there were more growth, because it wants to look at the impact that the growth would have in the area. With the instance of Hess Field, they're talking about just providing public sewer to a park, and that would be for the tournaments and the other events that they hold out at the park. So I think we should run through the questions and get your feedback, which we can then provide. I'll tell you, the managers discussed this briefly this morning at our breakfast, and somebody said, well, we could wait until we update this Act 537 Sewer Service Plan in 2028, or do you really want to fast-track Hess Field now? And it was pointed out by myself and the Harris Township manager that Hess Field probably isn't being fast-tracked when this has been requested since 2012. So, we're probably at the very slow track at this point. So, we'll go through the questions. It is a very sticky wicket, because there is the possibility, and there is precedent, within our 537 Plan Now, back in 1987, a sewer line was run, a lateral was run, just to the Tussie Mountain property. None of the properties around Tussie Mountain was granted sewer. Tussie Mountain had a failure at the time. The COG later extended the sewer service area to include the properties around Tussie Mountain, and they have sewer, but it was many years later. So, there is precedent that this could be a dedicated lateral just to Hess Field, because I don't know that we necessarily want to open up that side of Ferguson Township, and then also that side of Harris Township, which are pretty rural in nature, to public sewer extension without more extensive discussions. And that's what I think we hope to do in 2028 with the 537 Plan update. So I will, if you're okay, run through these questions with you and get your feedback. So the first question is, does the municipality support establishing a policy that all public parkland may consider having access to public sewer infrastructure if it's economically
Any comments from the board? It's something I certainly support, and certainly the way it's worded, establishing a policy that all public parkland may consider. I, yeah, others? Amy, if you could take a vote, or take a tally on the votes, it's hard for me to tackle back and forth between the two here. Pardon? Elliot, okay, good, thanks.
So in, from a practical standpoint, if this went into effect, residents of the Ambleside area could request a water and sewer line to that park, even though that entire neighborhood is on septic.
Well, the request would actually have to come from the owner of the park, which in this case is us. So Patent Township, the board would have to decide, or it would have to come through the RAC first, the RAC would have to decide that there is a circumstance where we would want to see water and sewer, and then the board would have to make that request. It could never come just from residents of the area. And I don't know, we talked, again, we talked about this this morning, I'm not sure in what scenario, most of these public parks that we have in the center region, aside from the ones that are already very well-developed, Fulgham and Fields is one over in College Township that has restrooms. I don't know that we're ever going to have a situation where we're going to say we need public sewer to put in restrooms in one of our own municipally-owned parks, because outside of Bernal Road and Circleville Park, we don't really have parks that are destinations in our neighborhoods.
And I would like to reiterate that, just the wording of the question, I support the development of a policy, and the policy may, in fact, say, you know, we're not going to consider parks that are below a certain size, or, you know, with a certain designation by the location. I certainly support the development of a policy.
It seems like three supervisors in the room are supportive of developing the policy. Am I correct in that, Elliot?
Yeah, I am.
Okay.
Okay.
Great, thanks.
The question, does the municipality support CRPA and the Lucy Committee developing an amendment to the Regional Growth Boundary Sewer Service Agreement to define criteria and a process for parklands to request an extension to receive public sewer?
And/or?
Yeah, and the and/or is, does the municipality believe this discussion should be part of the comprehensive plan update and the 537 Plan process? And I would say that it probably needs to be both. I don't know that, I feel that it could wait much longer.
Yeah.
But I think that it needs to be a policy for Hess Field now, and then a broader policy for everything else, because you will get pushback probably, probably from some of the development community who will think they're getting a pass in the process.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And we want to, certainly want to do right by Harris at the same time, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I certainly agree, Jenna.
And we believe it should be part of the comprehensive plan?
Yeah.
Yes, that's what I'd say, yeah.
Okay.
Great.
Those are all the questions. Elliot?
Good, okay.
I'm not going to be on the board next year to, if arguments break out over this, but it was quite contentious previously, and it might be an idea to have a group of people talk about what could go wrong with this, or what could go right, and what we're going to do about it, just so that we don't dig ourselves a hole.
Yeah, that's a, that's a very good suggestion, actually, because the DRI process itself, unfortunately, I've lived through all of this, the DRI process itself, when it came about in 2013, and I'm looking at Betsy because she remembers this, because she represented the church, it came about because Harvest Fields Church in Harris Township had requested extension of sewer, and then it was supposed to be granted, and it was supposed to be at the time a unanimous approval. That approval was not gained, because one of our members that may share a common boundary with us didn't approve it. So there was a lawsuit filed, and so the DRI process was a cobbled-together agreement, and then it's been amended since then. So the process, for lack of better words, it's largely made up, so it needs to be probably looked at, debated a little bit longer, and solidified so it's better policy and not reactive policy, which is how it started. And the 537 Plan, we have not updated since 2005, and that was literally the month I started working in Harris Township. We were working on that with mapping and little stickers of where we wanted growth to go and things like that, so it needs to be done comprehensively.
Do we need any more? I think we've just had comments on that, and, or we voted on the questions?
Just, I'll send out to the COG.
Yeah, okay. Does anybody else have comments or questions? All right. Seeing none, let me just get back to my agenda here, and we've got, the second item is a request for financial support from Clearwater Conservancy. So Amy, are you taking that?
I'll take that. So after last month's presentation on their conservation efforts for the Hess Farm, Clearwater submitted a letter asking us for a contribution of $15,000 toward the project. Funding will actually be needed in 2026, spring of 2026. We'd like to get your thoughts on how you want to proceed with this, given our financial situation for next year. If this could be given in 2027, I think we would have a different feeling on a staff level towards it, but I'm not sure what you want to do for 2026.
Sure, so, raise hands and make comments. Amy, I'll have you monitor there. Any, any observations on this?
So you're saying 2027 is better?
Yes. Yeah, at this point in time, it would be very tough for us to put any, any, any more money into, any more expenditures into the 2026 budget. We are really close to being at absolute minimum, so.
My suggestion is to go with our Director of Finance, recommend.
Any other observations?
I agree, I think this comes spring is, we're talking about just a few months from now, it's a lot of money to just suddenly come up with.
Correct.
Elliot has a comment?
Elliot, come on here.
I think the suggestion is good, but I worry that we don't really know what's going to happen in 2027, or '08, or whatever, or any other time, so should there be some language that it's our intent, but we're not capacity?
Right. I don't think we commit or pledge anything at this point. I think we look at adding it into the 2027 budget when we're doing the budget at the end of 2026. I just think this, this request came in at the end of our budget process, and we would have to make some, some tough decisions if we wanted to, to add this to the 2026 budget. So, well, I wouldn't make any commitment that we would do it in 2027, that I, I would say that we'll look at it when we're budgeting for 2027.
Yeah. I'm assuming that Clearwater's reached out to other municipalities for similar support, and I'm also assuming that Clearwater would probably, would understand the difficulties of asking any municipality for a certain, this certainly a chunk of money at this time in the budget process, so maybe end up having a, I'm assuming that we'll end up having a conversation with them, and coming up with, you know, what they, a plan that they think would work, that we would then be able to fit into the budget process in 2026. So, great, do we, do you need any more feedback from us on that? Larry, I think, okay, looks good. Okay, we're on to the consent agenda, with your four items, well, three items, the consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? And a second? Do I hear, there's that? Okay. A second, any further discussion? So we'll call for the motion, the, call for the vote, those in favor of approving the consent agenda signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Okay, the consent agenda is approved, and we are now on to, let's hear the drum roll, the manager's report, okay.
Well, I have some very exciting news, well, I think it's exciting, I don't know what everybody else does, but, um, the policy. Anyway, so my exciting news is, if you remember, at this time last year, we started talking about the possibility of being included in a study to allow for the expansion of automated speed enforcement cameras to the Atherton corridor between Patent Township, Ferguson Township, and State College Borough that would run and encompass part of Penn State University. So we had submitted, I had submitted back in May, some written testimony to the Pennsylvania Local Government Commission when they had a hearing on it, about why this was a good safety tool for us, and why we need this, and gotten some information from the chief and some crash data. So Sunday afternoon, I received an email from the head of the Pennsylvania Local Government Commission, requesting that I do a recorded interview with him about our request, as he felt we had made a good case to be included in the study that they're finishing up. I spent an hour on the phone with my new friend, David, the head of the Local Government Commission, and two of his staff members on Monday, discussing our request and how it would benefit the residents of the center region and our three municipalities. He was very encouraging, and so he followed back up yesterday with some follow-up questions, and indicated that my comments are going to be included in the study that they're finishing, which will go before the Local Government Commission in the new year, and that then we would be able to advocate to be allowed to be included in the legislation to have speed enforcement cameras. They apparently were very struck by the fact that, though we're in the middle of the state, and we're in a geographically not a huge area like Philadelphia where they're currently being used, we have extenuating circumstances with Penn State University and all the visitors that we see, and they were also very impressed by the commitment that we existing, exist to safety in our community, now in the work that we've done with the speed, with the speed timing that we did through the corridor and some of the other efforts that we've done. And also, I made the case that we're not unlike other places in our part of the state that could benefit, including Williamsport and Plank Road, and actually, they're going to talk with the mayor of Williamsport to see if they would like to be included as well. So I'm very encouraged by all of this, as you remember, State College Borough and Ferguson have also been included in all of these discussions, and their elected officials and managers are supportive, and Penn State has also been supportive. So this would be a huge win for us if we're able to get these cameras. They're only located right now in work zones on state roads and in the city of Philadelphia on Roosevelt Boulevard, which has a lot more cars than we do on Atherton Street. So, more to come, but I really had kind of given up hope, and then I got that email on Sunday, so don't give up hope, I guess, is the message.
Yeah. Well, kudos!
Amy, that's great.
Yeah. Exciting.
One just little last thing, I just want to give a shout-out to our public works staff. It is leaf season in Patent Township, we are running free leaf trucks at this time, and as of last Friday, we had collected 285,000 pounds of leaves, and we have many more to go. Many.
Yeah. Does, does this seem like a peak leaf season to anybody else? I can't remember. I can't remember seeing so many leaves, maybe I'm just behind. Elliot?
No, this is the time of year when people are sick of more leaves, and want to use up their yards.
Good, Elliot.
I'm gonna pine for these puns when you're off the board, Elliot. I'll leaf it at that. Okay, and Amy, any more items you want to point out?
Nope, that's it.
Oh, okay, great, we're on to committee reports, and, let's see, anybody on the board have a committee report that they want to add something to? So I'm looking for hands up, or listening for cleared throats?
I'm not seeing anybody here.
Okay, sounds good, then we'll move on to other business, any other business, anybody, anywhere, about anything? Seeing none, I guess we'll move to item 12. Do I have a, oh, oh, oh!
No, I just want to make the announcement and thank Penn State for their Military Appreciation Week. We have several of the elected officials have attended a lot of their appreciation ceremonies and programs, and just want to say thank you for acknowledging the military, and to our veterans who are in the police department or patent, we thank you for your service.
Good, good comment, thank you. I know in years past, I have had the honor of accompanying Pam to several of these events, and Penn State really rolls out, is it a red carpet? It's certainly a welcome, huge welcome, Matt. Any other comments, announcements? Okay, if not, I'll hear a motion for item 12. So moved. Okay, meeting is adjourned, and we will see everyone a week from now for the discussion with the Planning Commission.